Okay, so we're gonna start the meeting. Our call the meeting in order at five oh two on Tuesday. It's a Cow meeting that we're having. And I guess first thing is five.
Four point four point one please.
Four point four one? Okay, so we go to four point four one, Economic Development Services.
Four point four point one financial statement.
Okay, four point four, okay, sorry, thank you. The financial statements. Okay, you got it? Do I need to, uh? I need to read this to recommend?
To recommend, yes.
Okay, recommend that council of municipality of West St. Paul approve the financial statements for the period of December thirty first two, uh, twenty twenty-two. Has everyone read it, discussion? This is the draft only.
I had no questions.
No questions?
No questions.
Councilor Clark, you got any question?
Yeah, I'm just trying to find the information and then I'll, I'll, I'll ask the question.
Oh, okay, Councilor Clark, there.
Uh, now it's time.
I guess I have a question on, uh, on your wastewater treatment plant. Do you pro-rate those numbers? Cause you have like, uh, administrative costs, you have, uh...
What do you mean pro-rate which numbers?
Uh, let me find its own expenses. I think it was down on schedule. Three, oh, where is it there? See, like you have like administrative salaries, thirty-eight hundred on Rivers Edge.
Okay, so yes, so for all of the utilities, we allocate a certain percentage based on how many properties are connected to the utilities.
Okay.
Uh, we're required to allocate a percentage of administration charges or salary charges to the utilities as we do work within the utility as well. We don't have just a dedicated utility team, right? So, um, we take a portion of our year-end salaries and allocate it over the three utilities.
Okay, so yours, um, that includes PW also? Is that what you're just referring to or what?
So that would be administration, like, um, so the managers, so they include myself, the C A O, our PW manager, as well as our administrative staff.
Okay.
Uh, we have a dedicated utility clerk and then we have two dedicated utility staff.
Okay. That's it, thank you.
So I have a question.
That's for Councilor Clark?
Under, under the, um, uh, land sales and performance, that would be for any surplus land that we sold?
Correct.
So we sold some surplus land for one point five million in the industrial park. Is that not included in here or is that off?
It was one point, one million eight hundred and eight.
Or something like that, okay, yeah.
Yeah, it wasn't one point five, it was...
One point eight?
One, yeah, it was one, one million...
Eighty thousand.
Eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight, eighty-eight.
Okay, and has that been captured here somewhere? Cause I don't see that under deposits, land sales and performance.
Okay, so, oh, you're looking at deposits, so those would be liabilities.
Okay.
Those would be our accounts that we have on the books for our developers.
Oh, I see, okay, those are deposits that we pay for, okay, sorry.
Yeah, so we've, yeah, we've collected deposits on behalf of developers and then we, if we have any legal expenses, um, engineering expenses are offset through those deposits that we've collected.
Okay, and so then the purchase, the, the sale of the land would be under non-financial assets, land and land improvements?
So the sale of the land would actually be included in your current year surplus. It would be, it would show on your income statement.
Okay.
Um, I'll just take a peek there right now.
But we wouldn't have that right now, would we?
So we do have the one million for the land in the business park. Uh, and as per resolution, it is also, uh, to be transferred to general reserves. So that's been done as well.
Okay, so it wouldn't show up on any...
So it's, it's a net effect to zero, um, in our financials. So we have, we've received the revenues and we've also transferred it over to our reserves. So we have a revenue and expense.
And which reserve would it go to?
It went to the general reserve as per the resolution.
Okay. Okay, good, thank you.
So these statements here will be uploaded to M M O, uh, for March fifteenth reporting. Uh, these are our year-end statements. It shows you the whole for twenty twenty-two. Uh, you will see that our surplus is one point nine million. Uh, that is due to, you have your added taxes, which are your, um, additions to the rolls for properties that are assessed partway through a year that did not make assessment cutoff. Uh, and we also realized, uh, a significant amount of, um, investment interest on our accounts over the year due to the increased interest rate. Uh, so that attributes to the larger surplus. Um, so there's no concerns here with these financials for reporting to M M O. Uh, we're required by March fifteenth as per government regulation.
Anyone have any more questions?
Yeah, from, to the mayor, to our CFO. Uh, what are, what are the interest rates on the three loans for the PW building, the fire hall and the fire truck? Do we know what those?
Off the top of my head, I do not know.
But they're fully open loans that can be paid at any time?
They could be paid off, yeah. All loans are open loans.
Okay. And they would be paid off from surplus or from reserve?
That would be the choice.
The council, okay, thank you. I'm wondering if for the budget meeting, we could just get, um, the next one we have. We just get the interest rates on those three loans, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, I can definitely supply that.
Thank you.
Councilor Clark, five. Okay, I guess then we'll move to the next item on the agenda. And that will be, uh, voted delegation. Five point, no, three point one. So, Derek, are you ready? Okay. Great, yep.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand you wanted me to come by to talk about, uh, resolutions, uh, related to S twenty-two, twenty-nine, seventy-seven. So I thought I'd just sort of start off with council, just refresh, like, what was this subdivision all about? And then just some, uh, calls notes on resolutions and conditions of approvals, that sort of thing. So this subdivision, uh, you dealt with in, uh, in February. It's on Holmes Road, Holmes and, uh, and Pipeline. It's the one to, uh, create just over thirty new business park lots. There's associated rezoning with it, so there's the subject property. Here's the, um, uh, subdivision layouts. Uh, you can kind of see there the, the different lots that will come off of, uh, Pipeline and terminate then at Holmes or the, uh, the government road allowance. So, um, just a little bit of background on the Planning Act and what it says in terms of conditions of subdivision approval. So, uh, section one twenty-five, uh, outlines council's authority to add conditions on a subdivision. Uh, just so you're aware of that. And then section one thirty-five of the Planning Act has a listing of the different kinds of conditions that you can put in place. So conditions to make sure that you adhere, or proposal adheres with zoning bylaw, conditions to enter into a development agreement, uh, conditions that the government, the province might bestow on an application for water rights licensing, that sort of thing. There's a whole listing of things that you, uh, that you're allowed to do in there. And I guess what the purpose of those conditions are is to ensure that a proposal that comes before you is actually going to develop in the manner that it's been proposed and abide by all the provincial and local bylaws, policies, rules, regulations that you might have. So, uh, you're quite familiar with your development agreements, uh, standards for road surfacing and, and that sort of thing. The conditions also act as a checklist for the applicants as well as for the planning district to ensure that everything that's supposed to be done has been done before a certificate can be issued to the applicant. And the certificate is the final step. That's what they physically take down to land titles so new titles can be issued. So our office doesn't issue a certificate, sign them, sign the MyLars, that sort of thing, until all of those conditions are checked off as complete. Uh, through confirmation, whether it's from the municipality or from a provincial agency. Uh, you know, sometimes we'll get a letter from Hydro saying, yep, they've entered into the easements. Condition number five is okay by us. Perfect, good. And it's also important to note that conditions, uh, that are meant to be implemented at some point in the future, they need to, there needs to be a mechanism to be able to implement them. So keep in mind, when we're looking at a condition, I'm looking at it and go saying, has that condition been met or not? If it's something that's intended to be implemented at some point in the future, make sure that the roadways are asphalted, something like that. There needs to be a mechanism, like a development agreement or like a caveat, something like that. Um, that's what Hydro would use, you know? Make sure there's a caveat registered on title for those easements so that the, uh, the, uh, the, the, sorry, the utility lines can actually put in place. So with that in mind, let's just have a look at, um, the, the resolution for S twenty-two, twenty-nine, seventy-seven. And, uh, we flagged, uh, I guess it'd be the, the last four conditions, uh, of your resolutions, number eleven, twelve, thirteen and fourteen. So number eleven, uh, outlines that the applicant owners should provide perimeter fencing along the property lines to satisfaction of the municipality. So the way that's worded, it implies that this condition has to be satisfied before I can sign off on a MyLar going forward. I'm not sure that was your intent. Uh, from seeing the YouTube video, it seems like you want to ensure that there's fencing around this development as it develops. But the way this is worded, I would have to say to the applicant, not, I can't give you authority, go register your MyLars for your titles until you put that fence around there. That's the way it's worded, so. Um, condition number twelve was that the proposed lots should be serviced with holding tanks and not septic fields. Um, with that, I would say, how is that to be enforced? Cause just standing alone as a condition on its own, I, I don't know how you want that enforced. Uh, remember, uh, when these conditions are checked off, we don't then go back and look at them again. It's, you're on to the next step of development, so. Condition number thirteen was, uh, outlining that there should be no more than, uh, one, uh, primary building per lot, which is fine, and that, um, any other proposed lots or buildings need a conditional use approval from, from the council. So with that, I would say, with the first part, once again, how do you want me to enforce that? Uh, when people come for their building permits? And the second part, I would say, you can include that as, as part of your, uh, as part of your conditions. You can't circumvent the zoning bylaw or the Planning Act. If you want to make something a conditional use, you need to change your zoning bylaw. So the act does not allow you to add in another approval process, so to speak. And then the last condition, that the public reserve should be surfaced with gravel, similar to that, that number one or number eleven condition, once again, it sort of implies that that's going to be done now. You know, before I can sign off and let people go register their titles. I'm not sure that was your actual intent. Uh, I think that was one of those, when this thing's being developed, make sure that that's, that's gravels. Whenever your, you know, it turns odd, so to speak, to, uh, fit in all the infrastructure, that kind of stuff, so. Um, with that being said, um, just assuming, uh, making some assumptions on what I think your intent was on some of these and, and of course, let's discuss that and correct me if you're wrong, if I'm wrong. Um, with that condition number thirteen, I would say, remove that second half, talking about the conditional use. Just take that out of your resolution, cause you just, you, you can't do it. It's not enforceable. And then for everything else, the perimeter fence, the holding tanks, the surfacing of gravel, and even the limiting how many buildings you can have on a property, I'd say rule those into your development agreements. That way they can be, the development agreement is reviewed by council, signed off by administration, it's registered on title, and that's then the trigger for when anything's going to be developed on the property. Someone takes out a building permit, the development agreement gets, gets pulled, we have a look at that and go, oh, there's a condition on here, no more than one building, I'm going to be proposing, kind of a thing. Make sure that everything's all, all good with administration here. Likewise, when they want to go develop with the, uh, land developments, uh, building the, the roadways, doing the grading for the entire thing, that's going to trigger the, the fencing and the hard surf, or the gravel surfacing, all that kind of stuff. So that's what I would suggest unless I've completely missed the ball on what your intent was here, so. With that, absolutely.
Okay, I just want to comment on number thirteen.
Yeah.
Where it's, uh, the one primary building.
Yep.
The, the only reason I would have a problem doing that is if somebody comes to us legitimately at the beginning, they want to put up two strip malls or three strip malls, whatever.
Mm-hmm.
I don't want to eliminate the person from doing that, cause that's their initial plan on the land. It, I'm going, we always use the A W C buildings because that's basically all we have here is, it's the strip mall style building. Okay? It, where I think, I'm speaking for myself, is, as the issue is where we've had the buildings in the front and then in the back half of the property, there's another building all of a sudden going up. And now where they're coming to us, well, we need, you know, a variance for this or a variance for that because our holding tank is here or we have loading docks there. It's not proposed in the initial development and the initial planning of the land of the, each lot. But then they're coming in because our building, we, you know, our business is expanding or we, we need more space.
Right, right.
So by limiting the one building, I don't want to penalize the person that's coming in with the idea, with the intent of, I want to put a strip mall up for professional services, all that kind of stuff that is going to be, is allowed in the area. So how, and I, I think that's where we were speaking with the planner of that meeting, is how do we not penalize them for coming in with that, but at the same time not having that other building a year later come up behind the building?
So is the concern more of having multiple buildings on a property? Or is the concern more about things not, I'll say, fitting on a property? Being too compact, too, too much coverage on the lot?
I think it, to me, it comes down to, it, it starts to look cluttered where you got a building running behind another building with a ten-foot opening on the side that they're driving by, you know, to get into the next whatever business behind it.
Yeah.
People got fences between properties. It, it's, they tend to want to adjust their property to the existing building cause it wasn't planned, originally planned for in the first part of their, you know, they've got C cans, holding tanks in places, loading docks, you know?
Okay.
Nope, did that sound clear of, of what we're trying to say?
I think it's a combination of both, right?
Kind of getting, I guess.
It's a combination of not enough room and it's a combination of, uh, you have a primary business who now puts another building in the outback and then rents that out to another business or sells it to another business. So now we have multiple businesses, but it's not a strip mall. So it's as if I have a primary residence, but then I put another building in the back and I rent that out to somebody who would like to rent another house from me. It's not, it's, it's getting to the point where there's multiple businesses on one property that has a different primary.
So multiple businesses, multiple buildings?
Yeah.
One property?
Yeah.
Okay, are there any concerns about accessory buildings? Storage buildings, C cans, um, big sheds for lack of better, are, are there any concerns about that? Yeah?
Yeah, well, we're not, you're not looking at the, okay, we have eight-foot fencing.
Yeah.
I believe that was the number we put. These, these buildings aren't facing front out towards what you see off the perimeter, off Pipeline. You're staring at the back of them.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, sure, we have a nice facade on the interior of the development, but at the backside, you're looking at a, you know, steel-cladded building or a, it, it's not as nice as it would be looking at the front of it.
Okay.
And that's where, I think that's where we're stuck on this is...
And I think also we've, we've, um, put storage as a conditional use on, on, exterior storage as conditional uses a lot under the zoning?
I, I just wanted to double check.
Yeah.
Please, then I don't have to.
I can't. Can you just, how do I scroll down? Oh, wait a minute, maybe I just do this, okay. So it looks like there are a number of things that, um, self-storage facilities, exterior storage, that's just not allowed. Uh, a contractor's establishment has to be within a, a, a building. Uh, like, storage of, of material is, um, if it's outside, it has to be, is a conditional use. Uh, building supply uses, outdoor storage, conditional use. It looks like if there's anything that deals with outdoor things, um, are either just not allowed or they're conditional. So, so it kind of looks like the, I'll, I'll say the clutter concern. Um, if someone wants to propose such a thing, it's got to come to you, you know, for, for an approval and then you can add more conditions of, of, uh, or you can say no, that's always an option, right? Or you can add more conditions of only so much or only in these certain areas or you have to do extra screening or what have you, so. So there's that. Just trying to think about, would you prefer to see if someone has a business where they have, uh, storage or warehousing or something like that, that is within the main building? I, I know we have some along calculus where you have like the, I'll say the, the business end of it, the office and all that kind of stuff is at the front end and then, and then there's like, you know, the manufacturing part and then they have some storage of stuff, but it's all contained under one roof, so to speak. Is that more of what you want to see?
Yes, but at the same time, I don't want to penalize the guy that's coming in or the company that's coming in with the intent of two strip malls. You know, a, a, you know, two units, one facing each other with parking in the middle.
Okay.
Cause that's another issue is when they put these second buildings in the back is, they're cramming parking, you know, they're using as much space as they can.
Yeah.
And we have some down Capitolus. Like, all, all last weekend, there was, there was cars parked up and down Capitolus, which we specifically said to all those businesses, it's not allowed.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Mayor?
Yeah.
So under the zoning, under accessory uses, buildings or structures, you have, it's a P C, P slash C zoning. Permitted conditional, how can it be permitted and conditional at the same time?
Uh, some accessory uses would be permitted and some would be conditional. So if we, I can't scroll on this, how do I, do you want, you gotta, can you scroll up to section three point one? So that refers to, um, in, in section three. Or, or the very beginning of section three, we do with accessory buildings and uses. So there's a table there, uh, and it has things like, you know, carports or children's playground or play equipments, um, all sorts of little things like that. Uh, and it'll list if they're permitted or conditional in which type of use. So, just having a look there again. So for example, storage containers in, uh, commercial zones is a conditional use, but they're permitted in multifamily, or, sorry, not multifamily, permitted in industrial. Um, I, exterior storage, oh, look here, it says goods used in or produced by the primary use. Now that's permitted and conditional in, uh, commercial uses. Okay, so it looks like you could have some things that could be stored outside. So it, there, there's a few things that you could do, um, in, in a development agreement. You could say there is just flat out no exterior storage, that's it. It's all got to be within a building. You know, you could say the exception of parking or something like that, right? Uh, you can't have any goods or materials. You can go above and beyond, uh, your zoning bylaw by adding more restrictions. You just can't add another process. So if you want to say there's, there's no outdoor, uh, storage, fine, put that in the development agreement. I, it sounds like there is an issue with that for the clutter thing. It sounds like related to clutter, uh, of having accessory buildings. You could say no accessory buildings on these zones. That might be a way to address it as well. You can only have primary buildings. Now, there's no problem having two primary use buildings. That would be like the, the A W C thing that you see, right? It's one big property, I think they bought two lots, put them together.
Okay.
Or three lots or something like that, so it's technically one property. And they, you know, they put it to, uh, we'll call it strip malls, commercial powerhouse kind of, kind of buildings. They're both primary uses, single buildings, right?
But then we also have some that are, you know, one built, one business and, primary business in the front.
Mm-hmm.
And a primary business in the back.
Yeah.
Where you're looking at their sign down the front and it's, you know...
Yeah.
Building three C, which is at the back of the...
So through a development agreement, you could add on design parameters and you could address that. You know, you could, you could find a way to write in the design guidelines along with, if you had extra, um, I know you guys do like, you know, tree planting and that sort of thing, probably some signage kind of stuff. I know you've done in the, in the past, materials of the building. You could also do orientation of the buildings. You can have one building taking up the complete width of the property, but it's got to be at the front. Or you could have two buildings going lengthways down the, there's, there's ways that you could work that. Or you could have two buildings going lengthways down the, there's, there's ways that you could work that. Um, so that there's that. The, I guess the thing. Sorry?
DAs can get appealed?
DAs can absolutely be appealed, yes. Yeah.
And that's where you were, we were kinda talking before going, if you have something you really need to put in there, was to put it into your conditions.
Well, and remember through subdivisions, conditions can be appealed. Yeah. So through a subdivision, everything that you put in there has a possibility of being appealed. So that's especially why some of these things where I didn't think it was your intent to have like fencing now. I could see an applicant going, I'm not putting up a fence immediately now. I'm, let's appeal that and go to municipal board and say that that's unreasonable. Um, put that in your DA. Of course, you know, things within your development agreement can be, uh, can be appealed as well. So you'd. You can require development agreement. I don't think there's any question around that. You can put all sorts of things in there. I would suggest that you be very specific on. Those itemized things you wanna listing your development agreements. So. Uh, you know exactly what you want, administration knows what you want, the advocate knows exactly what you want, so you avoid any confusion there. Now. I'll say while you can put in, um, uh, those design parameters or those limitations on use or limitations on buildings. Like, you know, you can just have one building or you can't have a building behind another one, stuff like that. I, it's, it's a double edged sword. You can do that. But there is no mechanism to vary that. Once it's in your development agreement, it's there. The only way to reverse that is to amend the development agreement. And that requires a new public hearing process. It's a big shemazel kind of a thing to go through. So, I. I guess what I'm saying is if you're going to put something like this into your development agreement, you also have to go in eyes wide open. Knowing that you're giving up some level of control. And also a level of flexibility as well to the potential applicants or property owners. So, not an easy thing to balance.
Mr. Eno, could we put into the development agreement that's one building per, um, title? And with the, and put in with the exception of a strip mall, um, configuration?
Sure.
Right? Then we cover the bases.
Mm-hmm.
And any other, um, accessory buildings would fall under the current zoning, right? So that's why, what you're saying to us is basically revisit your zoning. And if you don't want accessory buildings on the back.
Mm-hmm.
Excluding storage, right? We would have to put that into our zoning. But for this particular. And we might not wanna do that for every area, but for this particular one, because it's right on the highway, because it's so visible.
Yeah.
We could put that into that development agreement this time.
Well, and that's, that's another good point, counselor, that, you, you know, maybe there's some parameters you want in place because of a, um, of a visual impact from a certain perspective. The ones that are facing towards the highway, maybe, I don't, I can't remember what lot numbers those are, but you could say, these are the rules for lots, one through five. Okay, good. You know, that only applies to here because we don't want people seeing the back end of these, you know, messes and all that kinda stuff. What happens further away, maybe there's more leniency there, you know, so.
Okay.
Yeah, you can apply through your development agreement, design standards across the board or for very specific parts of this proposal.
That would be probably more, if it was appealed, that would be a reasonable request, I think, on an appeal.
I would think that would be a reasonable request. I would view that no more than, um, if you said, look, we, we need some nicer fencing and nicer landscaping. That you're gonna see from the public roadway. But what happens on the interior of this development, we're not as concerned, right? Because that's not as much of a visual impact. Um, that's that kind of flexibility and then just applying it to certain areas that are of your concern, so.
And I think too, like, we, we, if we, the reason we did put holding tanks into that area was a concern of water pollution.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, with septic fields where water could pollute.
Mm-hmm.
The underground water and, and residential homes being close by.
Yeah.
So I would think that that, if it was appealed, would be a reasonable request again.
Uh, I would agree with you.
Okay.
I guess we would have to see what a municipal board would have to say, but yeah, I.
You mentioned a caveat versus a development agreement.
Well, a development agreement is registered on title as, as a caveat. So.
Okay.
A caveat is, um, once again, not a lawyer, might be speaking out of turn, but a, a caveat is just a, uh, a, a legal tool. As a, as a flag that there's something on the property. Sometimes it's a development agreement that's a caveat. Sometimes there is a, an easement that's a caveat. That's what you see on the actual land title sheet. It'll say caveat number, whatever it is. Exactly.
Okay.
Counselor.
All right, good. Thank you very much.
Uh, yes, Mr. Eno, um, could we, like, could we not, in conjunction with talking to conservation, have it so that, you know, we ask.
Conservation.
Conservation, that no, uh, septic field permits be issued for this role, the role number of such to such?
I, if you leave it up to conservation, conservation's gonna do whatever they're going to do under their guidelines. Um, you can, I, of course, encourage you to have all sorts of conversations that you want with conservation, but ultimately it is their purview. Unless you put that as a parameter in your development agreement. So, I, I just, you know, if, if you're gonna leave it up to conservation, you're, there's, there's an element of risk, right? There's an element of control you're gonna give up.
Okay.
Make sense?
Good. So, on that, uh, holding tank and septic tank, I think there was only three lots in that one development that could have had, that. Was sized big enough to have septic fields.
Mm-hmm.
Was it not?
No, there's basically two acres.
Two acres, two hundred feet. I think there was only three that didn't have.
Three that didn't.
Okay, yeah, I just added reverse, sorry.
Yeah, just on, on, uh, the orientation and the layout of the, of the lots, or the buildings on the lots. In terms of next steps, is there, is there a way that we can collaborate with the developer and seek their feedback in terms of how? Like, if we tell them our desires and, and what our vision is in terms of the way these should be laid out? Um, is there a way that we can seek some collaboration and, and feedback from the developer? As, as next steps, um, say, you know, we wanna see some orientation. We wanna, you know, possible some strip, strip mall type buildings on these lots.
Hmm.
And on the, the lots that could possibly back on to residential, we wanna see this kinda orientation. Can we do that moving forward?
I think you probably could. I think what I would suggest is through a resolution, you say. One of the requirements is to enter into a development agreement to deal with a number of different items, including, um, uh, you could say. Uh, building layouts or orientations for lots, whatever we can pick on here, if it's just for specific lots, that kinda stuff. And then typically through your, I have to defer to, to Pam and Lani, but I would think typically through your. Development agreement process of drafting that your staff and their staff would be collaborating on, well, what exactly does that mean in terms of the finite details? You know, if we're talking about building orientation of lots, um, two, three and four of block three or something like that. Um, what exactly does that mean? Well, let's get into those details, right? That's where that collaboration can come, can come about. Your development agreement or your condition at this point is just listing the items that you want addressed. The process of coming up with that development agreement is when you're going to get into the, the nitty gritty. You know, just like you would list, um, in your development agreements, uh, roadway standards. That's all you're gonna say at this point. Well, when you get into your development agreement, I'm assuming you're gonna have all the engineering specs and the cross-sections and the, and the, uh, different sub-bases. You don't have to put that into this resolution, but you should identify that you wanna address roads. Or you wanna address building layouts for the whole thing or for certain areas or landscaping requirements, that kinda stuff. So I, I think through that process of creating, you can have that negoti-, is that typically what you guys do? Yep, okay. That's what I thought.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
So we'll move on to the next, um. On the agenda is. Four point one, four point, yeah, four, four point four two. Uh, Manitowoc Municipal Relations Assessment Services, twenty twenty-three assessment levy. So I guess if there's any questions, I didn't. Counselor.
Uh, just to the acting CEO, this is something we pay every year to the province of Manitowoc for assessments, is that correct?
That's correct. So, uh, this levy covers the assessment services that the province provides to the municipality.
For taxes purposes?
Yes.
Thanks.
And what? I've, go ahead.
No, I was just saying, like, you know, they charge a hundred and fifty grand they charge us to, uh, assess our, our, our.
Yeah, I was surprised today. That was my question. They charge. Okay, so we'll move on to the next item, which is. Five point one, Red River Planning District Municipal Contributions. So it's a letter from, uh, RRWP. And if you have any questions or any comments on it. Counselor.
Okay, I think I talked about this previously to counsel, that, uh, with the leaving of Selkirk. That our, um, municipal contribution's gone up, uh, I believe it's around twenty-five thousand. And also, um, we hired, or Red River Planning hired an internal bylaw officer, which I believe we'd also discussed at one of the last meetings. And I indicated that that would be an internal, uh, staff now, so. Uh, that is why there's no cost sharing agreement required anymore. It's now a staff member of Red River Planning.
Any other questions? Okay, so next on the agenda is question. Is there anyone that wants, anyone registered or?
It's five forty-four now. No.
Maybe that's the CEO.
Nora Albert, two twelve, Carolina Avenue. I just have, um, three questions for clarification on the, uh. Financial statements, so I'm not sure if you're able to get the answer tonight or not. Um, one, you, you, um, Mr. Mayor, have, uh, talked a bit about the, uh. Utility expenditures, and so my first question was just, uh, where are those captured over in the services list? So, um, under utility, there are the, the costs, the expenditures. And then if we go back to page one, general operating, when you go into, uh, various services, where are those utility? Um, expenditures, they're generally, uh, personnel related, so where would those be captured?
Okay, so which, where were they on the, uh?
Um, I believe on the utility, it would be a statement of operations, sewer utility. Uh, it gives expenditures on page one, so when we take that back then to the front. Uh, looking at the various breakdown of services, where would we be capturing that? On the general operating fund. Page three, Dr. Jurecic.
Um, go ahead.
So let me just clarify, what you're asking is where are we capturing the income versus the debt? Is that what you're asking?
Um, not quite. On, uh, when I look at the sewer utility statement of operations, page one, and it gives a, a breakdown of expenditures.
Right. Under long-term debt, is that where you're going?
Um, then where, where do those personnel numbers? Where are those reflected over in the general operating fund statement?
Okay, are you talking about the long-term debt? Or are you talking due to utility?
Just expenditure breakdown?
Yeah.
On page one.
Well, I'm looking at page one. But there, but there is under non-current liabilities due to utility, and then there's long-term debentures. And there's debentures for each L I D. So, uh, I'm just wondering, what section are you under?
So the, the label is sewer utility statement of operations.
What's the dollar?
Page one.
What's the dollar?
Okay, I don't, I don't seem to have that.
Dollar on bottom of the page. Go ahead, counselor.
The total expenditure, uh, left-hand column is seven hundred thirty-three thousand six hundred seventy.
Go ahead, counselor.
I'm just wondering if, uh, through the mayor, the CEO, if this is a question that Mrs. Albert could, uh. Refer back to Ms. Shudo and, you know, during the week, something that could probably be clarified a lot more through her.
Yes, it should be answered, uh.
Sure. It's she or a director of finance.
Sure. And then my next question was. On page one, revenue. On general operating fund statement of operations. Page one, uh, at the bottom, I'm not sure if, um, if CFO answered this, or not. Uh, the miscellaneous revenue budgeted was forty-one thousand and the actual was one point nine million and change. Um, under a miscellaneous, that's a huge amount, so, um, where has that money come from? Where it was modeled to security.
I believe she did explain it. It was that land sale and there was the added taxes, added to taxes, and then that four hundred, the forty-one thousand.
All right. And then the other, uh, is a little more complicated. Um, it's regarding recreation services. So we see recreation slash Sonova and a few places throughout the, uh, reporting. Um, but actually, that is, it, it functions under bylaw twenty eighteen dash O three. It's essentially functioning within government terms as a, an SOA, a special operating agency. Whereby the bylaw from this government, this level of government. Um, gave the recreation committee, Sonova, they have sort of autonomy to make management decisions. So that it's not held up and having to come back to council. They're able to make those management decisions. Uh, regarding recreation and sports, uh, for the community. But as a part of that bylaw, uh, there also, it's clearly stated how they're to be accountable and, uh, to both the council and the public. And over the last four years, the last statement, financial statement coming from the recreation Sonova area, or as we call it. Um, was for the year ending this December twenty seventeen. So I'm wondering when we will see the twenty eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-two. In, in the bylaw twenty eighteen O three. It says, uh, the role of the recreation committee. Uh, the, uh, which is, uh, point one, D, is to administer and maintain monies and funds related to each of these. Above-murked sports, maintain records, prepare budgets and financial reports for the annual audit, review. And presentation to council on a quarterly basis. We, we haven't been seeing that over the last four, five years, so I'm wondering how that would get.
Which bylaw was it?
Uh, twenty eighteen dash O three.
Right by law.
That may take some time.
Yes, we need some, we may not have the question. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Any others? Go ahead.
You don't have to leave though.
Eleanor, ten forty-five, Los Chakros. I don't know if I'm asking the same question as Mrs. Albert again. On, uh, page four of the.
the general operating fund statement of operations, looking at total recreation cultural expenditures, it looks as if the actual amount was overspent by, the actual amount budgeted was overspent by almost $6,000. Not asking for the answer now, but perhaps on Thursday it could be answered as, what constituted the over expenditure there, and did council at some point have a resolution to okay that over expenditure? And then, I, I, the transfers to reserves, further on page four, the last section, there is a negative amount, and perhaps on Thursday that negative amount could be explained?
What was, all the questions?
Is that okay? You get what I?
I have.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, for questions?
Nothing today?
Nothing today? Okay, thank you very much.
I could make a comment if I have.
Okay, so now we move down to adjournment. Committee of the whole of council was adjourned at 5:53.